Good morning.
It is now nine oh five and we will let everyone get settled and go ahead and commence the meeting. The emergency manager directed this public hearing to conduct it in accordance with MCL 399.203 subsection two, which provides that not less than sixty caliber days after the transmittal of a preliminary report, the historic district study committee shall hold a public hearing in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Please note that the committee's report is a preliminary report. The report is subject to modification and amendment. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public input and comment concerning the report. There are, if anyone doesn't have a copy, there are additional copies of the report on the table in the back of the room. If anyone needs an additional copy, we can provide a copy after the meeting if necessary. The report is meant to be transmitted to the following agencies for review and comment: The Planning Commission, the Flint Planning Commission to be specific, the Flint Historic District Commission, the Secretary of State, and the Michigan Historical Commission. In addition, the Michigan Historic Preservation Review Board. My name is Crystal Olmstead. I'm Assistant City Attorney and I will be moderating this morning's meeting. I will now ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During the public comment period, anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter may approach the podium and be heard. Each speaker will have five minutes to comment. At four minutes and thirty seconds, I will notify the speaker by raising my hand that they have thirty seconds left to wrap their comments by holding up my hand. Once a speaker's time has expired, I will inform the speaker and call upon the next speaker. We ask that public speakers ensure their comments concern the subject matter of the public hearing. We also ask that everyone in attendance be respectful and courteous. Any individual who creates a public disturbance will be removed from the meeting. A person whose behavior violates this orderly conduct ordinance may be charged with creating a public disturbance. In August of 2013, former emergency manager Darnell Early appointed five individuals to chair the Carriagertown Historic District Review Committee: Tim Monahan, Myron Shelton, Sally Jager, (I apologize if I'm pronouncing correctly), and John Hurdough. The committee met once a month and reviewed the western boundary of the Carriagertown Historic District. The particular area that it reviewed is a section of Carriagertown Historic District that lies west of Grand Travers from Fifth Avenue in front of Hurley Hospital, down to the river and encompassing Atwood Stadium in the Stone Street redevelopment area. The committee submitted its preliminary report to EM Early on or about August 24, 2014. Fifty copies were provided to the clerk's office for public review, as I mentioned earlier.
You missed Heather Bernas.
I apologize, Heather Bernas, who is in attendance today. At this time, I will read the committee's summary of its findings. Actually, we'll start with the executive summary. From September 2013 through April 2014, the Carriagertown Historic District Boundary Review Committee met informally at the Good Beans Cafe for the purpose of interviewing key persons that reside in or are involved with redevelopment of the Carriagertown neighborhood, the University Avenue Corridor, Hurley Hospital, and Atwood Stadium. Mr. Michael Brown, acting as the City of Flint's Emergency Manager, appointed the committee. The committee's objective was to develop recommendations that it believed would lead to improving the conditions of a very unstable and quickly deteriorating area of housing, vacant lots, and a few commercial properties. The recommendations of this committee are reflective of a majority of the group. Mrs. Heather Bernas strongly opposes moving the boundary. I'd like to make a correction. The committee was appointed by the former EM, Michael Brown, and the report was submitted to former EM, Mr. Early, just for clarification. A summary of these recommendations is as follows: The City of Flint would actively enforce historic district ordinances and support historic district redevelopment for the purposes of retaining that part of history not already lost. Move the western Carriagertown Historic District boundary off of the goal to Grand Travers, removing ten blocks from the current historic district. With the removal of these mostly vacant blocks, the City of Flint should then assess whether the new Carriagertown Historic District now meets the criteria of having enough of the original housing stock to qualify as a federally recognized historic district. The City of Flint should allow Hurley Hospital to remove the eight residential houses they own in the area that has been removed from the historic district for the purpose of stability and public safety. The City of Flint should work with Kettering University, which now owns Atwood Stadium, to quickly allow for the removal of several vacant structures around Atwood Stadium for the purpose of stability and public safety, excuse me. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comment, particularly people from the committee. Would anyone like to come forward?
Good morning. Good morning. Could you please speak to your neighbor?
Yes, my name is Leanne Marcus. I am currently the President of the Carriagertown Historic Neighborhood Association. I was also a Historic District Commissioner for ten years. I have resided in Carriagertown for fifteen years and I've served as the President for half of that time. The Board of Directors of the Carriagertown Historic Neighborhood Association, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization who is democratically elected by the Neighborhood Association, has voted to reject the proposal reduction of the historic district boundaries. It is unfortunate that the public hearing with this issue is scheduled at nine AM on a Friday when most neighborhood residents must be at work. The only people who can attend are those with the day off or are here as part of their job. Thusly, we have recorded for your consideration the following reasons for our rejection so that many voices may be heard. As stated by the staff at the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, the report is based on inaccurate understandings of the authority of the Historic District Study Committee, and the district should be reviewed as a whole and reasonable boundaries developed based on history, significance, and integrity, not on purpose of use or development intent. The document does not meet any standards for appropriate or legal process. We have significant questions about the composure of the study committee. The process was led by a neighborhood resident that is not a member of the Neighborhood Association, a non-Carriagertown business owner, and two individuals listed on the report who did not even participate in the process. These four members have neither constructive or historic preservation credentials. It did not include a Historic District Commissioner with the historic preservation knowledge and experience. However, instead of using this knowledge, the committee excluded her for preparation and review of the report. Actually, it appears that it was authored by one person. Based on conversations with numerous individuals who were quoted in this report, they were either misquoted, not actually interviewed by the committee, or credited with opinions that have not been endorsed or vetted by the institutions or organizations. For example, the Flint Public Arts Project sent us an email that states, "Support or non-support for it, the boundary change." It is not for FPAP's mission as such by connecting places, activities, disused sites, and transforming the image of the city. The report does not discuss any of the potential negative impacts of the boundary change to the entire district. This includes, but is not limited to, historic tax credits, code enforcement mechanisms that are unique to the historic district, and most importantly, respect and require due diligence on the Native American burial ground, or as otherwise stated, as the Stone Street redevelopment area. The report suggests that only use of federal funds will provide protection, which is true, but that only happens when federal funds are used and not all development and demolition is federally funded. For some reason, one of the most important historical landmarks in our city, Atwood Stadium, was recommended for removal, a single-site designation to be sought. However, we fail to see the logic in delisting a resource that already has a designation only to go through the process of relisting. This makes absolutely no sense. In Civic Park, experts were consulted to review the historic districts, its integrity, the structures, and the area-wide impact. This report was used by the City of Flint, the Historic District Commission, the State of Michigan, and the Genesee County Land Bank Authority. The final decision was that the boundaries would not be moved and the Historic District Commission would allow to review this document to allow specific demolitions. Why was this process not afforded to us? We require analysis by experts, community engagement, and a plan that ties into the master plan for our neighborhood. And I'm going to refer to the Vice President of Carriagertown Neighborhood Association. I have an engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Freeman. I am Vice President of the Carriagertown Historic Neighborhood Association. I also serve in a number of capacities within our community. I serve on the economic development preparation for the City of Flint, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and also serve as a trustee at Mont Community College. I have lived in Carriagertown for twenty-one years. My address is 225 University Avenue, Flint, Michigan. So based on our assessment of the motivation for this effort, it has been a few that have no interest in the entire historic district. Former Emergency Manager Mike Brown was prompted by some of the members of the former Atwood Authority to start the process. While the following Emergency Manager approved the representatives, this process has not been urged by the Mayor, the Master Plan, the City Planner, former Emergency Manager Early, the Historic District Commission, the Planning Commission, the Neighborhood Association, Hurley Hospital, or Kettering University. It has been a process encouraged by the City Attorney and a few members of the Atwood Authority that is no longer authority. It has been publicly recognized that this process has been flawed from the beginning, thus the title of preliminary report, and has also been referred to as a draft. Our question is, why a draft recommendation is being provided to the public for comment where the next step in the process is supposed to be decision versus revision? And if public comment is only to improve the analysis and recommendations, should not the purpose of this public hearing be only to provide feedback on the report and not to immediately change the boundaries? Today, you may hear support for this preliminary report. However, it is our assertion that those who support such a poorly crafted and factually void document are either victims to misinformation or have a personal and/or professional agenda and do not have the interests of the entire district at heart. We, the Board and residents of the Carriagertown Historic Neighborhood Association, respectfully request that this process be abandoned. We require code enforcement, zoning compliance, and nuisance abatement. The lack of these, compounded by the current institutional ownership, has been the source of light in the entire neighborhood, not the historic designation. We have recently met with city leadership and Kettering University about ways that we can partner. While Hurley has refused to acknowledge their culpability in this matter and did not send a representative to the meeting, we are more than willing to work with them on planning, property assessment, and potential selective demolition where necessary. But any concession or activity should ensure benefit to the entire historic district, the Native American burial ground, and the future of this neighborhood. We appreciate your time and attention to this matter and welcome additional dialogue on how the community can reach consensus in this matter of light elimination and neighborhood stabilization. Thank you.
Can the public speak to please come forward? Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm David Boyke. I am a resident of the City of Flint. I own property in the Carriagertown Historic District. I'm here today representing the Genesee County Historic Site and the Dr. Dork Carriage Company Foundation, which owns the restored national landmark of the Dr. Dork Carriage Company headquarters at 316 Warner Street in the Carriagertown Historic District. We wish to go out record to fully support the Carriagertown Neighborhood Association in their statement. We feel that the modification of the Carriagertown boundaries should not be done. The report was not done in accordance with Public Act 169 of 1970, as I mentioned. The report spoke little about the history we are trying to preserve, rather it focused on the desire of nearby institutions wishing to clean up light through demolition. Anyone who is familiar with the historic district, and I will say that I was chairman of the historic district for many years, knows that demolition is allowed in our historic districts. The ordinance is not prohibiting it and it doesn't encourage light. As a resident, I have restored seven structures in Carriagertown myself over the last thirty years. I know that the Carriagertown Neighborhood Association has always been about improving the neighborhood and getting rid of light. But we've had a constant problem with the City of Flint building inspections on enforcing the codes to make people clean up their properties. The probably, the one biggest problem that we've had is Hurley Hospital. The Historic District Commission has had issues with Hurley because they bought fourteen properties in the historic district knowing that it was a historic district and knowing the city ordinance prohibited outright demolition. And their project failed. Now, in most cases, they would be forced to sell the property to somebody else, but they held on to that property. All these properties were occupied when they took them over. And over the last twenty years, they have just deteriorated because they have not maintained it. In fact, the Neighborhood Association has went in and cleaned properties up for them. But now we hear that people want to delist this because they want to tear the properties down. We feel that they should be held accountable. And like other people in the historic district, they should be forced to clean up the light in the neighborhood. The one item that I think is overlooked here is that the whole purpose of the historic district ordinance is to protect our heritage. We have less than eight hundred structures in our city identified as historic structures and protected for the future. That's a small amount when you consider all the buildings that we once had in the city. The historic district ordinance is the only ordinance that protects fully the structures. Designation as a federal designation only protects it from federal funds being used on that structure. So with the city ordinance, anybody doing work on the exterior or on the streetscape of the historic district has to come before the commission and have to review it. And we feel that this is necessary because there is still a lot of history in this area that deserves to be protected. The Marcus Street Fire Station, which will soon be turned into a group of, it was fully restored back in the nineteen eighties. Next door to that is the last twentieth-century automobile factory in the City of Flint, the Dork Motor Car Factory. We have over eight houses in this portion of this historic district that have been restored with federal funds using almost a half a million dollars in the last six years. We feel, because an effort was made to restore these properties, that they should be protected for the future generations to follow us. We also have Atwood Stadium, which has been a Flint gem for many, many years.
Five minutes.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve is from here. We have a little bit of a problem.
Thank you, sir.
So the city has three choices in regard to the historic district in Carriagertown. You can engage in code enforcement, requiring property owners to redevelop their property or impose fines. And I like that this may only result in more than any exorbitant cost of redevelopment will be beyond the means of existing owners within the foreseeable future. The investment that would be required by a typical property owner would be so far beyond the actual value of the property that most property owners in the neighborhood have not improved their property. And it's become consensus that, in fact, the historic district has done more to impede preservation of historic buildings than to preserve them. If you look at other comparable neighborhoods with historic homes in them, compared to Carriagertown, they're in better condition with more historic homes still standing. So if the goal of the historic district is to preserve historic homes, the historic district designation has utterly failed in Carriagertown. You can also engage as development agencies and partners using powers such as eminent domain if necessary and put together a broad strategy for reclamation of the valuable historic homes within the district. And Flint Public Art Project is well a partner in this, can support grants, serve as an end user, and participate in stakeholder meetings and contribute to a vision for that project. As the owner of building on the corner of Stone and University, we've been present in Carriagertown for about three years. We also have a lease purchase agreement with the Carriagertown Neighborhood Association and have offered to partner with Carriagertown in the development of the plan for the expansion of that project to incorporate as many homes as we could absorb within our framework. So, you know, we believe that existing homes could be put to use in our vicinity on Stone Street. However, the cooperation on the part of the Carriagertown Neighborhood Association has been lacking. Our requests for support for grants, signed letters in support of programs and grants has received no response. And our development project for the Spencer's Art House has received threats from the Carriagertown Neighborhood Association for taking contract positions to their stand on the historic district. Given the Carriagertown's current executive board's disposition, we don't see them as being a great partner in redevelopment.
Is this relevant to the issue? I mean, you said that this is supposed to be about the study committee and he's talking about a greatly handsome neighborhood association?
How is it? Five minutes, sir.
There are these two options. It can change the boundaries of the historic district, allowing existing owners to demolish buildings beyond repair, build infill in other sites, and create individual historic home designations where justified, to continue preserving what can be preserved. Flint Public Art Project believes this third option is the most likely to be flexible enough to produce the much-needed neighborhood changes and is likely to result in more, not less, preservation of existing buildings.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Please speak to your neighbor, sir.
Yes, my name is Frederick Jones. My address is 625 Mason Street, located in Carriagertown. I apologize if I can't hear a little bit.
I apologize, sir, for interrupting you. Could you please, all the speakers, please speak more clearly directly into the microphone and raise your voice a bit.
Was that not clear enough? Once again...
I'm sorry, it's for the record.
My name is Frederick Jones. Address 625 Mason Street, location Carriagertown.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. I arrived just a little bit later and I'm listening to the aspects which were, you know, that I heard.
Can you hear him? Can you hear you? Hold on one second, the mic may not be working.
Let's start with this again.
Much better, too.
Once again, my name is Frederick Jones. Address 625 Mason Street, location Carriagertown. And first of all, I must admit that I came in on a tail end of a few presentations about, you know, why the preservation is so necessary. But then also, in that aspect, we must realize that this area is about moving forward. Now, I've been involved or living there in that area for more than twenty-two years now. And I have seen the hindrances that have been raised, you know, when it comes to changing the perception of Carriagertown in itself. Now, the annexation of this particular area that is in question right now, really, if you don't have a plan to change it immediately, why in the world should you go ahead and hold on to that property at all? And I have seen over the course of more than two decades the vast amount of money that has been, should I say, issued down in this area with very little results. Now, when it comes to the annexation of that property, that gives Hurley and also the other interested parties an opportunity to go ahead and change the face of that particular area because if you realize this, we're only talking about a small portion of the area that we're talking about annexation. The vast part of the Carriagertown will still be intact, all right, which will require those persons who are in Carriagertown, okay, after the annexation, that they will be able to go ahead and present and provide more, should I say, substantial funding and everything towards initiating, you know, the current changes that are going on. I am in agreement with the annexation. And the reason being because this is a very valuable corridor right now. And to apprise the functioning of this future endeavor when it comes to, you know, connecting with the colleges that are so much affiliated with the area, that's going to be a jewel. If people do not see a change, if people do not see progress, if people do not see, should I say, substantial abilities and also the maturity and everything of the area, then people will not come down in that area. Because I do realize bones have been found. Okay, that's one aspect that we have to, you know, reconsider. But when it comes to providing people, or should I say replication of properties that are down there, because anything that they replicate, and also businesses, you know, would be enhanced by coming down there. People go back and forth to Hurley each and every day. They pass through that area. And I know that light and everything has been, has been issued. Yes, it has receded much greatly, but yet still, too. Do not negate this opportunity to grow and enhance because of certain issues when it comes to just a sliver of a piece of property that, you know, you can't do anything with anyway. Now, give Hurley an opportunity, give Kettering an opportunity, give the other identities an opportunity to go ahead and change the perspective of that area. And I guarantee you that more money will flow back into the old areas of Carriagertown and will be gratefully appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For the next one, could you please come forward?
My name is Jackie Voist. I'm with H2A Architects. I am a thirty-six, CFR sixty-one, federally qualified historic architect. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Architects. I'd like to remind people that our historic resources include people, places, buildings, events, are not just pieces of architecture, not just homes. And so I would like to see the historic district boundaries remain. So my wife, to this day, still wants to spread my ashes at the fifty-yard line because I've spent so much time down there when going through those neighborhoods. And I can remember where I was when Mayor Williamson was elected, he came over to me and he said, you know, we're gonna tear Adwood Stadium down, we're gonna build a new stadium on the other side of the river. I said, well, I'll tell you what, Mayor, as much as I appreciate the history of that facility, if there's money and resources to build a new stadium that'll be better for this community going forward, I don't have any problem with that. And I love my colleges, you know, David White, Michael Freeman, Leanne Marcus, Heather Burnash, the Turner. I respect where they're coming from. In fact, we're on the same page, we all want to see Flint go forward, and I love their passion and interest, just happen to respectfully disagree with. Now, let's get down to the bottom line. Yes, I've got, if you want to call it selfish interest in seeing the development of Adwood Stadium, I do think the day will come, and hopefully we're gonna have a new playing surface down there, and we can invite all our friends and colleagues from everywhere to come down. And I'll tell you what, the feedback I get is there's a lot of people in suburbia that don't like coming down to Flint because of the perception of every neighborhood that's in bad shape and crime and so forth. And the only way you begin to change that is to make constructive changes. Now, I'll tell you what, I don't have any problem, I'm going in a room right now with my friends, and let's sit down. I don't think they would disagree. There's a large number of structures over in that area that need to be torn down yesterday. And what is the real interest? If it's, if it's preserving some of the houses over there, I respect that. If it's about preserving a boundary, of which I picked up last night's paper, and I think there's eleven houses in that area, to my knowledge, where the real, where the property taxes, you have to be paying. Now, if there's a viable plan, and again, I like to think I'm a reasonable person, to truly restore all of those houses in that neighborhood, then I don't think I'd have any problem with sitting down and listening. But I can remember the late Dave Doherty at Kettering University telling me, you know, that Third Avenue, Fifth Avenue corridor is a vital area for the rebirth and preservation of the city of Flint. And I agreed with him, and I remember him telling me, he said, whatever you do with that, but either tear the dang thing down or preserve it, don't let it just sit there. And with all due respect, so many of those houses over in that area have been sitting, and sitting, and sitting, and I just don't think it's reasonable to think that enough money and resources is gonna come forward to preserve and restore those homes. But like I said, I think there's people on both sides could probably sit in a room and maybe find some common ground, I'm willing to do that, but you know something? At the end of the day, if that can't be done, it's time to move forward to the betterment of the city of Flint. It really is, and I would be in favor of moving the boundary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. My name is Penny Bruce-Bain-Navola. I live at three-twenty plus Second Avenue, and I guess if you want to talk about a little bit of history, my home was built in eighteen ninety-six. Actually, one of the Fords lived in it, according to Chris. And I totally agree with Judge Beagle that if we can come to a consensus about this and sit down and figure out what's gonna do, but on the other hand, I've lived in the neighborhood for over seventeen years. I love my home. I've fought for my home, stayed personally. The reason we moved here is because of the history and all the beautiful houses, but from what I'm seeing is, the houses that basically do need to be taken care of as far as because of dilapidation, they need to come down. I'm just, I'm classified as totally disabled, health-wise, due to the fact that they just closed the store down. I've noticed that in my neighborhood, I can actually go out and sit in the beautiful gazebo that I put erect every summer. It's nice to be able to finally go out and not feel afraid in the neighborhood. At least that's what I'm feeling lately since it's been gone. I can actually go out on my porch if I want to and do whatever. I, I guess I just totally agree with Judge Beagle that if, if it needs to be done, fine, if, if, and we've been at ads for this, with this for years. If the houses can be restored, okay. If they can't, get rid of them, especially the ones on Stone Street. It's, it's horrible. I went to an event this last summer to, for the Art Institute, because they're trying to restore Spencer's. There's also a garden that they've erected there. I couldn't park down the street because somebody that lives on that street is making quite an eyesore of just us parking down there so that we can enjoy our neighborhood. On top of that, my letter came to me through the city of Flint. I don't know about anybody else, but I got my letter from the city of Flint. Tim Monahan didn't have nothing to do with that. I feel that I'm going to live in my home for the rest of my life. I want to stay there. I own that house, it's mine. I'm responsible for restoring it, and if we can't take care of what's going on as far as the dilapidation, then they need to come down, and maybe it's a good thing that the federal dollars will come to us, because then I can have some work done to my home, and I can't do it on my own. I can't. Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Again, the city greatly welcomes input from the community to help to betterment of the power of the recommendation. Ms. Burnash?
Hi, my name is Heather Burnash, and I'm a resident of Flint. My address is Eighteenth Street Stevens.
You look at it. So if we exclude that area, just on those two points alone, I personally think it just extends this racist policy that's been going on for a long time. A lot of people that are sitting in this room helped strip those houses. And now they're here to talk about how that area is cancer. When fifteen or twenty years ago, they were here talking about how they wanted to save it and stop Hurley Medical Center from tearing it down. I have a $250,000 piece of cardboard hanging on my wall from when Hartland Manor was nothing but a mess. And some consulting firm had been paid to assess the area to rebuild the nursing home. And that $250,000 cardboard model ended up trashed in the trashed lobby of Hartland Manor. So there's a lot of stinking hypocrisy in this room, reeking hypocrisy in this room. It should not be removed. Most importantly, in my opinion, as far as Flint history goes, at University of Begoul, that was Mayor Al Jones' house. That was a mayor's house. So you have a mayor's house, the first black mortuary, and a Native American burial ground. It would be completely offensive to remove from the historic district boundaries. I'd just like to point out, you know, with that in mind, we venerate all these industrial leaders downtown. And the sit-down strikes, that the plaque that's supposed to be recognizing it down by Kettering there has been trashed. And nobody's bothered to clean it up. Yet we're here to talk about history. This is hypocrisy. Hurley should be held responsible. The city should be held responsible. And it simply shouldn't be removed. I'm sure there's people that hate me standing in this room right now that totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Duncan Beagle, born and raised in Flint. I work in Flint probably ten to twelve hours a day, but I now live out in the Fenton area. And I just want to bring some common sense to this. I'm a baseball fan. And I know the history of Detroit Tigers and Tiger Stadium probably better than anybody. And I can't begin to tell you how I wrestled with whether to tear down Tiger Stadium and build a new ballpark. Because I am one that appreciates history. But I'll tell you what, as I went back and forth, back and forth, I realized Tiger Stadium served its well, but it was time for something that could serve that community better. I've been involved in the Edward Stadium project for twenty years. The only reason I really got involved is because it was sitting there empty for two years. And then the mayor, Stanley, appointed me to say, well, you're running your mouth so much, you can be chairperson of the Edward Stadium Authority. So my wife, to this day, still wants to spread my ashes at the fifty-yard line because I've spent so much time down there when going through those neighborhoods. And I can remember where I was when Mayor Williamson was elected. He came over to me and he said, you know, we're gonna tear Edward Stadium down. We're gonna build a new stadium on the other side of the river. I said, well, I'll tell you what, Mayor. As much as I appreciate the history of that facility, if there's money and resources to build a new stadium that'll be better for this community going forward, I don't have any problem with that. And I love my colleagues, you know, David White, Michael Freeman, Leanne Marcus, Heather Burnash, the attorney. I respect where they're coming from. In fact, we're on the same page. We all want to see Flint go forward. And I love their passion and interest. Just happen to respectfully disagree with. Now let's get down to the bottom line. Yes, I've got, if you want to call it, some interest in seeing the development of Edward Stadium. I do think the day will come, and hopefully we're gonna have a new playing surface down there, and we can invite all our friends and colleagues from everywhere to come down. And I'll tell you what, the feedback I get is there's a lot of people in suburbia that don't like coming down to Flint because of the perception of every neighborhood that's in bad shape and crime and so forth. And the only way you begin to change that is to make constructive changes. Now I'll tell you what, I don't have any problem with sitting in a room right now with my friends. And let's sit down. I don't think they would disagree. There's a large number of structures over in that area that need to be torn down yesterday. And what is the real interest? If it's preserving some of the houses over there, I respect that. If it's about preserving the boundary, of which I picked up last night's paper, and I think there's eleven houses in that area, to my knowledge, where the property taxes have yet to be paid. Now, if there's a viable plan, and again, I like to think I'm a reasonable person, to truly restore all of those houses in that neighborhood, then I don't think I'd have any problem with sitting down and listening. But I can remember the late Dave Doherty at Kettering University telling me, you know, that Third Avenue, Fifth Avenue corridor is a vital area for the rebirth and preservation of the city of Flint. And I agreed with him. And I remember him telling me, he said, whatever you do with that, but either tear the dang thing down or preserve it. Don't let it just sit there. And with all due respect, so many of those houses over in that area have been sitting and sitting and sitting. And I just don't think it's reasonable to think that enough money and resources is gonna come forward to preserve and restore those homes. But like I said, I think there's people on both sides could probably sit in a room and maybe find some common ground. I'm willing to do that. But you know something? At the end of the day, if that can't be done, it's time to move forward to the betterment of the city of Flint. It really is, and I would be in favor of moving the boundary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Penny Bruce-Benavila. I live at 320 Plus Second Avenue. And I guess if you want to talk about a little bit of history, my home was built in 1896. Actually, one of the Fords lived in it, according to Chris. And I totally agree with Judge Beagle that if we can come to a consensus about this and sit down and figure out what's gonna do. But on the other hand, I've lived in the neighborhood for over seventeen years. I love my home. I've fought for my home, stayed personally. The reason we moved here is because of the history and all the beautiful houses. But from what I'm seeing is the houses that basically do need to be taken care of as far as because of dilapidation, they need to come down. I'm just classified as totally disabled health-wise due to the fact that they just closed the store down. I've noticed that in my neighborhood, I can actually go out and sit in the beautiful gazebo that I put erect every summer. It's nice to be able to finally go out and not feel afraid in the neighborhood. At least that's what I'm feeling lately since it's been gone. I can actually go out on my porch if I want to and do whatever. I guess I just totally agree with Judge Beagle that if it needs to be done, fine. If, and we've been at ads with this for years. If the houses can be restored, okay. If they can't, get rid of them, especially the ones on Stone Street. It's horrible. I went to an event this last summer for the Art Institute because they're trying to restore Spencer's. There's also a garden that they've erected there. I couldn't park down the street because somebody that lives on that street is making quite an eyesore of just us parking down there so that we can enjoy our neighborhood. On top of that, my letter came to me through the city of Flint. I don't know about anybody else, but I got my letter from the city of Flint. Tim Monahan didn't have nothing to do with that. I feel that I'm going to live in my home for the rest of my life. I want to stay there. I own that house. It's mine. I'm responsible for restoring it. And if we can't take care of what's going on as far as the dilapidation, then they need to come down. And maybe it's a good thing that the federal dollars will come to us because then I can have some work done to my home. And I can't do it on my own. I can't. Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers? Again, the city greatly welcomes input from the community to help to better the neighborhood, the recommendation. Ms. Burnash?
Hi, my name is Heather Burnash, and I'm a resident of Flint. I have residence in Oakville, Stevens Street. I've lived in this city for about twenty years now. In a house that was built in 1890. I'm one of those people that bought a $10,000 house and put almost $200,000 into it. So I'm one of those fools. But I'm proud of it, and I love my house, and I wouldn't have it any other way. I realize and appreciate the value of historic houses and what that value brings to the entire city of Flint. I have a master's degree in historic preservation. I'm on the Flint Historic District Commission. And I was on this Carricktown Boundary Change Committee. To my knowledge, I participated in and attended every meeting that the committee held. I might have missed one, but I don't recall. There are some problems that I have with the process, with our meetings, and with the report. Of the committee members, to my knowledge, I'm the only one that has formalized training in historic preservation. Also, to my knowledge, generally, it was just Mr. Monahan and myself that attended the meetings. One of the committee members only attended the first meeting these summers or winters in Florida and was not at most of the meetings. He was only at the first one. Another committee member, Nessa Skiger, indicated to us at our first meeting that because of some personal issues, she could not attend or participate in any of the meetings. And in fact, was not at a single meeting that I attended. So it concerns me that when half of the committee is not present for any of the meetings, how they can sign their name to this report. When they did not participate in gathering information or hearing any of the testimony or participating in any of these interviews. So it concerns me, the sincerity of their names signed to this report. Some other problems I have with the report. The initial copy that I received, I was not involved or included in drafting this report. Only the interviews from people and entities that supported the boundary change were initially included in the report. The Neighborhood Association did participate and spoke with us and opposed the change. That paragraph was not included in the initial report. I had to insist that all testimony from everyone was to be included in the report. So initially, the report only had people that opposed the change. My lack of support for the change was also not included in the original report. I had to insist that my lack of support be noted in the report. The report indicates that people were interviewed by the committee. It indicates that Michael Freeman was interviewed. It indicates that Nancy Sinclair was interviewed. It indicates that Ken Van Wagner was interviewed, Philip Barnhart. I was at every committee meeting. None of these people were at any of the meetings. They may have been spoken to outside of an official committee meeting by other people, but none of them talked to me. We never did any site visits. We never walked around and looked at this area. We never discussed specific addresses. We had about four meetings in a coffee shop. That was it. I don't feel like the process was adequate. And I was surprised at what the recommendation was because I was never included in that discussion of what will be our recommendation. I just received a copy of this report, like everyone else in the city of Flint. So I was surprised at what the recommendation was because, to my knowledge, there wasn't a discussion of, okay, now we have all this information. What do we decide? What is the decision gonna be? And being a committee member, I would think I should have been involved in that process. Have committed the decision. Several entities have submitted letters to the city by saying their lack of support for the recommendation. Carricktown Neighborhood Association. The Historic District Commission voted to also write a letter opposing the recommendation. The Michigan Historic Preservation Network does not support the change. The Motor Cities National Heritage Area does not support the change. The Flint Planning Commission does not support the change. The State Historic Preservation Office does not support the change. Thank you, Ms. Burnash.
My name is Byron Shelton. I'm at Shelton's Automotive, Third Avenue. My grandfather come here in 1850. He was a cattle buyer for all the caddies. Here in Tennessee County, shipped them down to Detroit so they'd get slaughtered. Anyway, and then my father was born in 1898. Our house was probably like the house on your thing that we had demolished a few years ago because they got burned in a fire. But anyway, we've been in Flint longer than anybody else in this place today, in their family. All right? Everyone likes to say, the stadium's been there for a long time. I remember standing out in front, watching Flann arrows play baseball. And I remember trying to run after their balls, and I was only about eight, and a big boy ran over top of me, and I couldn't get the baseball. And I remember they had one stadium. I played football there for Central High School. We had the biggest crowd that anybody ever had down here. Bigger than the President did, bigger than Lions did. And we had over 22,000 people there at that time. So that's another history. The neighborhood's changed a lot. My building's changed a lot. In 1928, when my dad had to station built. And there isn't any station left on the street. We had eight service centers on Third Avenue at one time. And now there's no service centers, no gas stations at all left. They're all demolished and moved. At one time, we had Sears and Roebuck. One time, we had Goodyear. We had General Tiger. We had BF Goodrich. They're all gone. They're all moved to subgroups. So the neighborhood's changed. Now we have to change. And the homes up there in Stone Street need to be changed. So we live in some things that homes are good, don't get me wrong. But when they all run down, they look like crap. They need to be changed. Down on my side, we got the teachers' credit next to me. We got Shelton's Automotive next, which is my place. And everything's clean, all in that way, you know? And the nice powder gun, University Avenue. Anyway, we brought out the brand drivers here. We bought the liquor store. That's probably the best thing that happened to already grew. All of a sudden, when they took the place, people moved. The people, other people moved. And now it's a clean place down there. You can drive by there. There's no river, no more. And we couldn't ask for a nicer deal happening. I like to thank Kettering for that because they did a beautiful job of getting rid of the place. And that's all. I just want to say, I think the houses should go.
Thank you very much, Judge Shelton. Do we have any additional public speakers? Again, the city welcomes all input.
My name is Nyra Sharif, and I live in Mott Park. I do not live in Carricktown, but I am here to stand in solidarity with the Carricktown Neighborhood Association. And I wanted to start, first of all, with this report. And I really question this entire process. Because usually, when you are, I guess, evaluating a neighborhood, you have a housing inventory. I don't know if that occurred with this, like, as a foundation for this particular report. But there is a map stating, like, the different properties, but it doesn't talk about the quality of those particular properties. The second thing that I question is if this is a draft and plenimillary, like, is there gonna be another public hearing once our input is incorporated? Is it gonna be incorporated? Because usually, when there's public hearings, it's just like, it's just about to be a done deal. And when, we just, as a city of Flint, we just adopted our master plan. And while that was a fabulous process for the city as a whole to get involved, I feel like acting on this now and changing the boundaries now when you have resident input that has not been incorporated and people who actually live in that area, and this is gonna affect them every day, I think everyone needs to sit down. There was a lot of people who expressed in their comments to sit down and hash things out and come up with a consensus. When is that gonna happen? Because talk is cheap. So hopefully, that will happen. It will kind of be an open and transparent process. And the people who could not be here would know the results of those particular meetings. And I question, what sort of community do we want to live in? Because policies like this, it sets a tone for what our community and what we want our community to be. Because our policies, our ordinances, our decisions are a statement of our values. And what are our values as a community? Do we want to be known as the community that when the going gets tough, that we're just gonna, just like, cut, you know, just cut our losses and run? I lived in a historic home. It was not under a historic, like, designated historic. And that requires, I would say, a lot, many times, it's labor love. I know our property values as a whole is in a toilet. And you may not ever recoup, like, the loss that you're putting into your home. But if we are, as a community, if we want to be in twenty years, like, this young mobile talent or the creative class or whatever, this designated population, things like historic districts are, it has character, adds character to a community. Now, you don't have people moving across the country who live in a track home. Like, that's not what people are, like, if we want to attract the sort of people that we say that we want to attract, then we need to be, with our values and our policies, demonstrate that we want to have, that we value our history. Unfortunately, a lot of our history, our past, like, we're not good at that collectively. Like, with the I-75 and the building the expressways and all these things, we have a lot of our history that is irrefrably lost. And we can't regain that. But we have an opportunity today, in 2015, to stand up collectively and say, we value our history. We value the history of the common people and not necessarily the history of the industrialists and the, in the large businesses. So I really hope that, number one, that this does not move forward until everyone sits down and hash things out and then bring it back to the public to have another public hearing after everything is incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Collins, Ms. Sharif. Do we have any additional?
Hello, I'm William Gany. I live in the city of Flint. I have lived in Carricktown. I'm a member of Downtown Properties. It's a little LLC that we have, six houses. We rent primarily to the Michigan State Medical Students, the student physicians. I think, in fact, I think we rent to more Michigan State Medical Students on the Flint campus than anyone else. I also am the only one who is invited to the Michigan State incoming class that's not part of the university. I'm the only one that's invited. I take the students around. I also am employed occasionally by Hurley Hospital to take new residents around the city of Flint. I go and take them on a four-hour tour. And I always take them right down to Stone Street. And I tell them how that has happened with Hurley Foundation, who I believe is the one that owns most of those properties, has bought them and elected them. With what Kettering University has done with the liquor store, I feel it's a game changer for that entire area. I feel it's viable as long as 75 or 80% of those houses are fixed up. I could rent them. There's a big demand for quality houses in downtown Flint. But there's very few quality places available. We get, I would say, great rent. We get $1,200 a month for a house. They pay all the utilities. They couldn't be happier. It's for medical students. They love it. In the past, Flint campus, they had to force the students to come. It was a lottery. The last couple of years, that's changed. There's actually people who are wanting to come to Flint, to this campus. And one of the things that students tell me is that they like the character of the houses. I restore the houses. Two of the houses are in process right now. They're just as bad as ones on the Stone Street. But that's what the students seem to like, like the character of the houses, just like she had said the previous speaker. It's their unique. Also, it seems like they like them, whether they're unique historically or like the polished concrete at the Michigan State new campus, there are those locked apartments. They just like it because it's different. But I like to encourage the players, the people that own these properties, to try to get some kind of grant to fix them up. If they can get a billion dollars for the Kettering University corridor for safety, they should be able to come up with a million dollars to fix all those houses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional public speakers? Please come forward, any public speakers. If we have no additional public speakers, that concludes the meeting.
I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please state your name for the record.
Certainly. My name is Paul Heron. I reside at 525 Mason Street in Carricktown. And staying germane, I want to remind everybody, this is a line on a piece of paper. It seems like in Flint, we always have to split into two camps. Those are for, and those are against, and we fight like that. Instead of realizing that there's gonna be opposition and there's gonna be support, and between the two, then we can come to a solution. Remember, it's a line on a piece of paper. I've heard those that are against the boundary change say that we lose gems like the fire station and the car factory and Edward Stadium. It's a line on a piece of paper. Why don't we include those things to satisfy their needs? Those are very valuable historic things that maybe should stay in a neighborhood that has an historic designation. That's easy. It's a line on a piece of paper. And we discovered that after we changed this line, changed this boundary, changed this border, and there's not enough stock in the neighborhood to beat a historically designated neighborhood, let's move the boundary north, where there are more houses that are viable. It's a line on a piece of paper. It's not that hard to come together on this. It's not that hard to come together. Really, the two entities that are here don't even have a boxer in the fight. We've got some entities that want to make change on the west side of university. And we've got an entity on the east side of university that doesn't want that change to take place. It's a line on a piece of paper. If we keep on doing what we've always done, we'll always get what we've always gotten. Twenty-five years I've been in Carricktown. Twenty-five years I've watched the neighborhood change, whether it was arson, accident, or intentional. The stock that was there twenty-five years ago does not exist. So the true question is, what does it take to qualify for a national historic designation? What does it take to qualify for a state historic designation? Once we know those numbers, that line on the piece of paper can accomplish everybody's goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public speakers? Again, the city welcomes all input.
Thank you. My name is Chris Del Mar. I live in Flint, Michigan. It's unfortunate that there's the idea of shrinking the district. What has gone on over the years is just simply neglect by those entities that own some of these properties, especially Hurley. It's unfortunate. They knew what they were buying, and they bought these properties. And through their own neglect, the negligence of the property, many of the parcels have deteriorated. It would be interesting to know from the city what the true objective is and the reason why. Several months ago, there was an article in the Journal, the Flint Journal, about using the area that's going to be done away with in Carricktown to use that for some type of power. that's going to be done away with in Carriage Town to use that for some type of possible civic center or sports complex. That would be unfortunate. Our community, over the years, has just taken away many of the historical things that are in Flint, Michigan. I often say, thank God we're not in Rome because we would tear down the Colosseum to make way for progress. We've seen, and I'm serious, we've seen the homes on Manning Street be torn down. We've seen the, after it became Auto World, we've seen the IMA auditorium torn down. And then our civic leaders say, well, what could we do for, what should we do for a community center or for a, I use the term community center, a civic center. But we just torn it down with the IMA auditorium. Now we want to shrink this area. So I will look for the, find out from the city what the true objective is. Ideally, to save Carriage Town, there is, in my estimation, one way to do that. And many of you are familiar with the movie, "If You Build It, They Will Come," referring to Field of Dreams and the baseball diamond. I say, if you move it, they will come. And that would be to move the, excuse me for a minute, to move the Crossroads Village to that part of town. To have a study to see what it would cost to move those buildings into Carriage Town, close off those areas as a living community, and it would bring people to downtown Flint. So it would take care of several objectives. Bring people to Flint, save the area, and at the same time, save Crossroads Village. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public speakers?
Freeman Reer, and I live in 3324 Glen Avenue, Genesee Township. Former resident of the city of Flint. But unfortunately, in the 2008 recession, I was hit pretty hard in regards to the recession, losing my job, going into bankruptcy, you know, feeling the pain of an economic collapse. At that time, I had purchased the Stockton Center, which is a historic district now. And I went through the last 10 years of my life renovating it and fixing it up, and it is now a stable property. It is a local historic district. It is a state historic district, and it is nationally eligible. This was the home of Colonel Stockton, Civil War 16th Michigan Regiment. He married Maria Smith, the youngest daughter of Jacob Smith. It was a founding European that settled this area. The youngest daughter in the Smith family also had James Longstreet move in and marry into the Smith family. So now we have the Confederacy and the Union both represented at the Stockton Center. The reason that's important is because it's the history of our city. And what the district for Carriage Town represents is the history of our city. If you take these things away, then we forget who we are. And what we can do as a city is build together. I'm back. I had to move away for a while, move my business out of the city, and now I am back in the city, working in the city, back in the Stockton, developing and working with the community to enrich the environment so that we can all have a prosperous city and work together. The buildings that exist in the district now, Atwood, the fire station, the only building left from the carriage factory, the houses up on Stone Street I've walked through, I've looked at, I've seen them with structural engineers. Are they salvageable? Yes, with a lot of work. Work is a good thing. We need work. That puts people to work. Can we do it? Absolutely. Look at Detroit. What are they doing? Rebuilding. What should we be doing? Rebuilding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reer. Any additional public speakers? Any additional public speakers? Be shy. Any additional public speakers?
Can I talk twice?
Okay. Well, in that case, I'd like to thank everyone very much for coming out this morning, taking the valuable time. Your comments were greatly appreciated, and this meeting is now adjourned.